Introduce your newest employees as well and the whole group that is with you, including.
I can't be too exact.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Wait, John's not.
John Reiner.
I'll grab him.
Mr. Reiner.
I'll grab him.
Okay, thank you.
I got him.
Great.
There he is.
All right. Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Molly Whitehead with the Boone EDC, couple of introductions. Um, my daughter Madeline.
Yay!
Yeah.
Madeline!
I'm expecting you today. It's real time to find babysitters. And then the rest of our team, Claire Colette, as you know, Jennifer Rubenstein, she is our new marketing communications director. She just joined our team two weeks ago. Yes, and then Rick Eisenhower, first firmist man, he is our board president.
Awesome.
So, in lieu of putting something up here.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Exactly. That's what the world. She knows me.
Susan, Susan, who you're hyping for. Um, you all have a copy of that digital copy in your inboxes as well, but we want to make sure you put something in front of you this morning. Um, so thank you all for having me back again today to discuss our contract with Boone County for Economic Development Services. Thought it would be helpful to kind of backtrack a little bit, go through a little bit about what the Boone EDC does, make sure we are all on the same page and on the same team. So what you'll see, page one here, our value proposition, um, we've, we've gone over this many times before, but, but the basics of what we do. You cannot read that on this sheet, but what it says is, uh, you guys are glasses on there, I don't want to read that. Um, our, our primary job is to recruit and retain employers to Boone County. That helps provide a tax base for you all to help fund your general fund. It, it impacts your local income taxes, it impacts your food and beverage taxes. It helps you fund public safety, it helps you fund infrastructure. Without economic development and without an organization like ours leading the charge, we don't have a response to these companies that are seeking. We would just be losing out on these opportunities. And I'm empathetic to your budget situation, that means, but it could be far worse, um, if we did not have a strong economic development organization. So if you flip over to page two, what we have here is the decision of everything that the Boone EDC does, at least as much as we could think of, um, that, that we are involved in. So again, first and foremost is largely small business attraction, bringing those companies to Boone County. Business retention, expansion visits, we call them BRD visits. We've done fifty-four, fifty-four of those, um, year to date. We typically do seventy-five, eighty is our goal. To give you some comparison, our, our counterparts of the IEDC typically have a similar goal to do BRD visits at the state level. They're both sixty. So the fact that we're doing fifty-four and it's just beginning of September, shows that this is a priority for us. Of course, small business initiatives, a main best partnership, micro loans for small businesses. That does not come out of our operating funds, that is important to know. And then where workforce is concerned, second chance workforce initiative, so partnering with Boone County Community Corrections to provide that necessary training for people so we can hopefully help them break the cycle and become productive members, um, once again. We also do an annual wage and benefits study on behalf of all of our employers to make sure we have a full understanding of where they stand in comparison to other communities. And that's very valuable information for them as well to ensure that they're paying appropriate wages. We are conducting a housing and utility study on the county's behalf. We're doing annual data service, that's coming up here in a couple of weeks. Claire has been working extensively on digital upgrade programming and providing support to the county for broadband to help increase that and take advantage of those grant dollars that are out there. And then, of course, RELE 1.0, which is an economic development grant from the state of Indiana that the Boone EDC took, took the lead on that, and we've been administering three point one million dollars in grant funds on behalf of Boone County. As a refresher, we're not allowed by the state program to seek reimbursement from the state on this. Um, and perhaps to my fault, I didn't see the contract to do it, we've been doing this pro bono for the county. Moving on to that, that slide at the bottom, again, just some of the highlights of, of what's, you know, what this translates into. Hundred and twenty-four leads, so that's hundred and twenty-four prospects that have considered Boone County. WINS, Eli Lilly, technically this was twenty twenty-two, however, they announced about another thirty dollars in, in new capital investment. New Cold, that was a hundred and fifty million. Ken's Foods, we'll get back to this one here in a second, but Ken's Foods actually just last night, we announced a forty million dollar expansion of Ken's Foods here in Lebanon. NavTec, Diner, small businesses like Hattie's Coffee House, Indiana Owned Gifts. And then we've had five micro loan recipients. Flipping over to page three. I would encourage you to look at the, the electronic version, I sent, it does have a couple of videos that unfortunately we won't be able to play, but here we have here is Mel McManstone, she runs Indiana Gifts and Indiana Owned, which is right here on the square in Lebanon. Mel, we didn't realize this, Mel, actually, are you lived in Boone County? She did not work in Boone County. She had dreams to open up a shop in Boone County and move her business here. Just so it happened that Claire reached out, I don't even know why she reached out.
Founder on social media.
Founder on social media, thought, we like this model, we think this would be a great small business to add to our community and went after her. And Mel will tell you that, like, Claire responded. Um, she's dealt with other economic development groups and that does not happen. And so we've got this successful retail shop now on the square, bringing to that new activity to our community. Now, kind of the nuts and bolts of, of what this looks like. Um, at the bottom of page three, you'll see a breakdown. And I, I want to dig into this a little bit more, some of you have seen this chart. What I did here in this chart, you've got twenty nineteen, that was a hundred and thirteen point one million dollars in capital investment. You are no doubt impacted by, what's the term, the location growth.
Max levy growth quotient.
Thank you, you're welcome. I'll never bring that up. You, you are no doubt impacted by that, that does impact your ability to raise your levy. However, what that does impact, what you see here is your county certified rate for that year, then therefore what your county tax levy was. Now, this is just on a one-year basis. So if you look at it, your capital investment of one hundred and thirteen point one, making some assumptions that it, that it assessed for that amount. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars, almost a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in the county's coffering, general fund, just for that project, just for that year. Backing into the Boone EDC contract for that year was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Your ROI, very basic, is a dollar twenty-six. Now.
A dollar twenty-six per.
For every dollar invested in the Boone EDC, you're at least giving a dollar twenty-six to two dollars and sixty million cents back. However, Erin, I know you have some questions over this and I heard those questions on, okay, let's break down into the tax abatement. What does this look like, what are we actually getting? So I use the Ken's Foods example, since we just closed that deal, um, on what this looks like. So what you have in front of you is a thirty-nine point seven million dollar capital investment. We're going to assume that it assesses at that amount simply because sometimes it will, sometimes it won't, sometimes they invest more than we anticipate. This is the best information we have to go off of at this time. You'll see real property, personal property, what the, what the taxes are collected. This does take into account the property tax or abatements that the city of Lebanon granted. So this is actually what the levy would be. And if you break down of that, what the county's estimated collection would be, your fifteen cents on the dollar roughly that you bring in, you'll see over that ten-year period, estimated to bring in seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars over that ten-year period for the county. That gives you, if we take the one hundred and forty thousand dollar contract that you have, one hundred and forty thousand dollar contract, we just gave you a five-time return on that investment. Because we're the ones that worked to work Ken's Foods here. And we're the ones that are working to keep them happy and keep them growing. And I would suggest that that five dollars and sixteen cent return, one, this means that by numbers that are here on this sheet, um, I intend on doing a much more in-depth report for you all. However, these are very, very conservative numbers of what your actual return on investment is. We're the only nonprofit that you're investing in that's helping to provide that dollar for dollar, above and beyond, that dollar for dollar return.
So on this, these projections, these came from?
Me. We do a cost benefit analysis on every project that comes across our desk.
And then I'm assuming that Ken's Foods give you what they anticipated? So these are just projections?
These are projections because we don't know, we don't know a lot of things when a deal closes. Again, the capital investment, they could look at that thirty-nine point seven and they've got a twenty percent markup. So all of a sudden that capital investment's going to go up. Um, it could go up, they could decide to do above and beyond what they even anticipated doing this first time. Not to mention then what does that actually end up assessing at a key of the day? And when does it get assessed? That's all going to depend on how far along they are in construction by January one. So there could be a lag in one or two years in these, just depending on the situation.
So is that the county alone collects seven twenty-two, the seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, or is it the different entities? So wouldn't Lebanon collect some of this?
So the estimated tax bill at the top shows four point seven million dollars. So over a ten-year period, Ken's Foods for this expansion alone would be looking around four point seven million dollars. I backed into that just based on what your county certified rate is, which I believe is somewhere around fourteen or fifteen cents. Fifteen, or it's, uh, fifteen cents for twenty twenty-three, um, is what that number is. So I backed that in, so of that four point seven million, the county's portion is estimated to be around seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Obviously, there are other taxing entities that will take the bigger chunk as well, or additional chunks of money.
We have the privilege today of having you here with us, Molly, right next to our financial consultant. Susan, can you comment on these figures as far as?
I don't know. Oh, so they should actually get more than that?
Um, that, that's how it works because their certified rate this year was, I believe, point one nine.
So I use the point one five, so.
Okay, so it's just a little bit different?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that, that rate goes through the entire ten years. So again, depending on.
Right.
How that rate's going to change over that ten years, that a dollar amount is going to.
Right, it's kind of fluctuating.
Correct. Okay.
But in this facility in the city of Lebanon? So Lebanon getting the tax? And they gave the abatement?
And, and that's what I'm saying, because Lebanon gave you an abatement, wouldn't they?
Well, yes, they gave the abatement, but Lebanon doesn't get to collect the full amount of tax from these companies. So it's where the tax rate.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So Lebanon's rate, I believe, is forty-five, fifty-five cents, somewhere in that round. In that realm is what they're collecting, you've got the library, you've got some of township, I don't even know how many others taxing probably. Yeah, we've got all these taxing entities that make that up, but the county also receives money, even if this is within a municipal boundary. Because at the end of the day, even if it isn't a municipal boundary, there are still services that Boone County government has to offer those companies in addition to the city of Lebanon.
So do you offer abatements as well?
We make recommendations on, on abatements. Boone EDC and then ourselves, we don't have that legal authority, that, that must go through city council, um, or a town council to get their approval. But we make those recommendations on what that should be. Some of the municipalities, we, we know where they want to be, and some of them may change depending on the project.
So how many abatements have you all recommended? So I see where you're like, hey, we given, see where you're like, we are bringing in a dollar twenty-six or, no, a dollar seventy-six for every dollar we invest. What's the correlation to that in the total abatements that have been given out?
So, um, going back to our previous discussion, what you see here with Ken's, what you were asking about a week or so ago when we last talked, I'll commit to doing a more extensive form of this for, quite frankly, now I'm intrigued because I've lowballed myself here.
Right.
Right? We're doing, we're providing a much greater return than I even estimated. Um, of these, of these deals that have gone through, and not, not including Lilly in these numbers for a variety of reasons, but of these deals, at least since twenty nineteen, a handful of them have received tax abatement. In Lebanon, we have not done a traditional ten-year tax abatement since twenty fifteen. So most of these are either three-year, four-year, five-year combination. Whitestown has a tendency to be a little more aggressive with tax abatements, and they do a lot of ten years. So all of that is not quite captured in this graph on page three. But that's why I just chose the example of Ken's Foods to show that, um, even with an abatement in here, you're still getting incredible value.
And if abatements are outside your purview, then, you know.
I get that they're outside of our purview, but I guess my question too is, they're outside of our purview, but if a recommendation's been made because obviously the business is coming to them, they're advocating to say, hey, you're going to go to Whitestown, Zionville, Lebanon and say, hey, they want to come here to do business. This is probably what we recommend.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, as an abatement, I would want to see, not, I, I guess I'm more interested in seeing what the actual amount of abatements are, because the abatements are impacting what we're taking in.
It'll be almost a billion dollars next year.
How much? What?
But then we, but then we would take that.
I'm sorry.
Almost a billion dollars.
Almost a billion dollars in abatements.
Assessed value of abatement. It's like nine hundred and ninety.
Are you saying, are you saying a billion with a D?
A B, a B, a billion.
To what's the total assessed value for the county, I guess.
Right.
That's, that's, and it's real estate and personal property. But there's almost.
Next year will be over a billion.
But then that's a conversation, Erin, with those, those people that are extending those, don't you agree?
We've never done it.
Well.
Right, I know, I'm just saying, if, if this is part of your analysis, I'm not, I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying.
I don't think you're picking on me, my, 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 my point, my point is this, I'm, I always go back, what is the ROI?
Right.
That's been a discussion, if you're saying, hey, I'm giving you X amount of dollars and this is the ROI, what is that ROI correlation to the abatement that was given? So the ROI naturally is going to decrease if an abatement was given.
Right.
Is the, is the thing.
And so.
That's also assuming, it, it's making some assumptions.
Because everybody doesn't get an abatement.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Our job, my job at the end of the day, my, quite frankly, my political philosophy is we want to try to attract those companies here for the least amount of money as possible.
Right.
Because we want to get a good deal for the taxpayers. We want to keep the company at the table if it's the company that we want, that we'll need.
Right.
So that is where I will come in to make those, um, make those recommendations. Um, again, depending on the municipality, they, they all have, each of the six, as you all know, treat everything differently, right? What's, what works in avenues isn't going to work in foreign towns. So, I, again, I'm happy to do that more, more here, however, a billion dollars in assessed value that's being abated compared to what the overall assessed value is for the county. Does anybody know that number off the top of their head?
Seven hundred and eight though.
Eight billion.
Seven hundred and eight billion dollars.
I think it's eight though.
Seven or.
Seven or eight.
I think it's, I think it's eight.
Yeah, seven or eight.
Eight billion.
Oh, if we were that, then we'd be.
We'd be good.
Good. Gold player chairs in the period.
No, we're, and, and we're actually, the assumption, we're assuming that these companies, you have the Buckford test, right? But for these incentives, these companies would not locate in Boone County. Again, I'll have my own recommendations and my own thoughts on how aggressive or how serious some of those companies are. I can tell you many of them are, the larger the, the larger the deal, um, probably the more aggressive we're going to get because those are very competitive deals, um, for our community. So yeah, you've got a billion dollars in abatement out there, some of which is, is out of your control, or most of which is out of your control. However, that's a portion of the overall assessed value.
No, I appreciate it, I think, Councilman Hedge, I think he made a call with, um, State, and some folks were telling us, or it was a conference call where IEDC was explaining that with LEAP, the difference with that project is that companies are now flocking, instead of us going out to ask, they're now just coming to say, we want to be here. Not everyone was a fan of that, and the corridor being built up so much. And you may not have to offer as many abatements, because with Lilly and the potential companies coming in the future, other companies who do work with them will naturally say, I need to be in close proximity. They'll, it'll force their head in like, I just got to be there close, so.
In which case, we take that into consideration in, in those negotiations. The thing to keep in mind with LEAP, and you'll see this chart on page four here, the thing to keep in mind with LEAP, that under the way state law is written, the taxing entities, councils do not have or may not have any authority over the property taxes collected any longer. So with LEAP, that is something that I would keep an eye on. You have a twelve percent pass through of whatever is collected. If the state has essentially granted those tax dollars in the form of an payment or cash, or however they end up doing it, you could walk away with zero dollars, depending on how those agreements are structured. Because again, state law allows them to do that. You'll see the breakdown I provided on page four here of a LEAP versus a non-LEAP project. I just picked twenty-five million dollars. We're not going to see it, you're going to see much larger deals in the LEAP district, no doubt. But to give us an apples to apples comparison, that twenty-five million dollars, once you break it down, once the state takes its pass through and then the county gets its portion, um, you might see about nine thousand dollars, ninety-one hundred dollars coming into county general fund in one year from that project, whereas a non-LEAP area, about seventy-five thousand. So I think what this says, although, you know, we'll continue to work those LEAP projects as long as that's the desire of the state and the, the city and this community, um, I think what that should mean for all of us is that we continue to work those deals outside of the LEAP district, where it makes sense, where it is smart growth for this community, because it is providing you a much bigger, much bigger value than you might get from those projects in LEAP.
So.
She's finished her snack, that's the wrap it up, she's like, wrap it up, I'm sorry. That's my signal. All right, all right, I'm sorry, she's like, wrap it up.
So the innovative, the innovation districts are those what you're describing, sorry.
Just a quick suggestion, when, when you're talking, Erin, and being in the office, we cannot hear you at all because of the mic being further there.
Where's it at?
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's way over there, I'm sorry.
So if you would, please.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, explain that a little bit. A LEAP district, who will receive nine thousand dollars?
This was just a hypothetical. So with the LEAP district, what the legislature, um, allowed the IEDC to do is to create these innovation development districts. The entire LEAP district as of today is not considered to be an IDD, Innovation Development District. They have set that for Lilly, so it is an IDD. So what happens with those IDDs, they're drawn.
Lilly did make it into that?
What, into the IDD?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, but the six hundred acres that Lilly has, and we might receive nine thousand dollars.
No, so again, this is a purely hypothetical example here. So whatever Lilly's investment is, we would take the three point seven billion and back that in. I think, I think or tillia provided those numbers, I guess it was fifty thousand or something was maybe the number from that. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm putting you totally on the spot. I don't think that was me.
Probably, yeah.
Probably Brian.
Probably Brian.
Okay.
Putting you on the spot. Um, but again, because it's an IDD, the state collects the property taxes and the state determines what the incentive is to the company. Not the city of Lebanon, not the commissioners, not you guys, the state controls that. So when you get your twelve percent pass through, again, it's going to depend on how the state has structured those deals. Now, obviously, there's going to be a lot of other benefits to Lilly, I'm not trying to knock them by any means.
Right.
They will employ people who are going to live here, who are going to spend money here, you'll collect taxes from those people. But where an IDD is concerned, your ability to levy money is, or levy taxes is going to be concerned. Does that, does that answer?
Yeah, I think even to another point, Jennifer, if, if, if it's economic development, they could actually go to zero, couldn't they? Potentially with it being.
Any other names?
Tax exempt, so there could be nothing that we collect far as taxes, so.
So I would argue, if you want to continue funding economic development, because we're going to need to find those additional sources.
Right.
Um, of, of revenue, should, depending on whatever ends up happening. Now, the IEDC with LEAP district, because they've been doing kind of project by project, we're not sure at this time if the entire thing will look like an IDD, if it will just be kind of like Swiss cheese. They have the authority to, to decide how they want to do that.
Okay.
So going through, um, into page four here, obviously, this does not show up on paper, but to have an understanding of what it takes to land a project, what it is on the, on the digital format here, we receive a lead, about fifty percent of our leads come in through the IEDC, and so that is a partnership with them. The others are coming in direct to our door. Companies are dictating here is what we would like to see, and what we have noticed over the past couple of years is that their requests have become significantly more extensive. It used to be, we could just flip them around, do you have a building or site that fits this need? Sure. Then, should they like our site, kind of envision it in a funnel, they like our site, they're going to come back and they're going to issue an RFP. What's your proposal for us to complete? What I, what it doesn't show on this, I just took a couple screenshots of what those RFPs look like. We get on average at this point, um, a lead comes in our door every one point four days. And typically, the, the shift we've seen is that the leads by and large are coming with the RFP.
I would say at least seventy-five to eighty percent.
Seventy-five to eighty percent are coming in with that RFP attached. Those RFPs can take, some of them are quick, no doubt about it. The one example I have on here was actually Ken's Foods, their very first deal with us in twenty sixteen. The RFP they sent us had about ten different tabs, each of those tabs probably had twenty-five to fifty questions on it. And we're talking anything from, we want to know where your energy source is coming from, we want to know about the roads and how are they rated? We want to understand X, Y, and Z, just to give us that information. So we collect all of that information, again, we're running a cost benefit analysis on, on every deal that comes in our door. And then, if you flip to the next page on page five, that's the aftercare piece, which I consider just as important, if not even more important than actually landing the deal. So what we do after we land a deal, um, did this this morning. Debbie now has an email in her inbox with all of the Ken's Foods information to say, hey, heads up, they filed. We're going to go back to the, here's all the information you need at the county level. We're going to go back to the company and make sure they do all of the extra filings. Because what we found over time is that many of these companies, as sophisticated as they are, uh, don't file stuff on time. Don't seem to be where they have a personal property tax due, and we're working hand in hand with the county to help track that down. We'll go through their annual compliance, clear reviews, all those CF1 forms that come in on an annual basis to make sure that those companies are actually doing what they said they would do. And if not, help us have an understanding of what's going on and why. We'll flip to page six then to really get into the budget section. So looking at.
She can come to any council meeting. Budget workshops are preferred, though.
She's adorable.
And it helps me in the end.
Maybe doing you more good than you realize.
We'll get, we'll get you the schedule.
There is a silver lining to everything else. So what you have here at the, the bottom of page six, um, every year, as I was explaining to some of you, there's kind of this Indiana Lego where local economic development officials or organizations are called LIDOs. So LIDO refers to the organizations in the Boone EDC, but I am also considered to be a LIDO as the executive director. So every year, one of my counterparts in southern Indiana does a line study, which is why you'll see, we have no idea who this is. About forty-five, forty, forty-five percent of forty to forty-five, um, communities around the state participate in this. So forty-five to fifty percent of, of the entire state helps us understand where does everybody else stand from a budget perspective, from a staffing perspective, to see how we rank. So you'll see when we look at our entire budget, public and private, any events, any sponsorship grants, where does the Boone EDC budget falls per capita? You'll see there we're twenty percent under, um, what our peers are, what that average per capita rate is. So we're at six dollars and fourteen cents per capita, average for the state of Indiana. So we're at $6.14 per capita, average for the state of Indiana, that actually should be for the year 2022. Average was $7.62. If we look to the next page, page seven, there at the top, I segregated out the data to say, okay, from a public dollar standpoint, let's pull the private and everything else out, from the public dollar standpoint, where do we stand? So you'll see Boonie DC, we are at $3.90 per capita, average for the state of Indiana was $6.25. So that's 38% under the average per capita rate for public dollars that are under contract for economic development organizations. We're the second fastest growing community in the entire state. Are we not first? No, we're second.
Who's first?
Hamilton. Still, still. Still. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm, if we've not passed them yet, we probably, that's as the last census data. So, second in the state, 63rd in the nation. And quite frankly, folks, like, we're the best economic development corporation in the entire state of Indiana. I will put my hat on that, put us up against anybody nationwide, and we're going to come out ahead. And it's worth the investment to have somebody fighting for you to do this, and we're doing it for significantly less money than our peers already are. Breaking it down further, if you look at the bottom there, the per capita rate, we base that upon the contracts, the public contracts that we have here in the, here in Boone County and the community. Zionsville, working on getting that one back up and going again in the new year. But you'll see Lebanon and Whitestown are already picking up a lion's share of that per capita rate. The county just under $2 per capita. The way that I would really envision this, or very encourage you to also look at this, is this is helping supplement North Town, Jamestown, Athens, and it's also helping to add to what Lebanon and Whitestown are already spending per capita. And then the final slide here on page eight, our Boonie DC budget, just to give you an idea of where the breakdown is. So the majority of our activities with economic development, workforce development, we see is about a third of our budget. That's because at this day and age, you cannot extract workforce development from economic development. It does not work. And then you'll see administrative, about 24% there. If you look at traditional nonprofits, traditional 501(c)(3), we're not, but that's our best comp. You want to see administrative rate under 25%, so we do meet that, do meet that criteria in front of your community organizations.
And there's four of you in the office.
When we're fully staffed, there are only four of us. Right now, we're at three and a half. And a half comes in for about four hours.
It's not Madeline.
It's not Madeline. Madeline's not there.
Not yet.
So, you know, I think, again, for those of us who are working with numbers, as a general rule, it's, it's great to see what you put together in terms of ROI, and I think Erin probably helped you say, hey, let's do that. I think, and I think the ROI could actually be enhanced if, if you tweak the numbers a little, which we talked about.
If I looked at who did this, I think we're gonna do greater numbers.
But with that, I mean, my other thought after meeting with you recently was, if we went to every business that, that stayed or was recruited in, you know, six months, 12 months later, and said, what impact did Molly and her group have on you staying or coming? I mean, I think that's where the, and again, it's not a black and white concept. It's hard to put an ROI together, although I appreciate Erin pushing you to, to do that. I think it's also, it, it might be helpful for us as we go forward to just go out and, and talk to some of these companies so that we can even get more of an, an assessment of how impactful it is. And again, I appreciate you taking Lilly out, because IEDC was 3.7 billion. I mean, obviously, they led it, but I appreciate this, and as I told you in our meeting, I think, you know, part of the onus is on us to make sure we, if we don't have clarity on what you're doing, we need to, we need to make sure we're, we're communicating throughout the year. And lastly, I'd just say kudos on Ken's Foods, that's $40 million we didn't have yesterday, I mean, until yesterday, so, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for Molly?
So from a budget perspective, do we need to chat?
Is there any further desire to revisit this budget?
Well, I guess, I brought it up, so maybe, going forward, as we think about what Lebanon is gonna take of you, and again, Matt's not here, but I would say this in front of Matt, just that you're probably gonna get polled, so should we revisit sort of what Erin and John did with, with our public safety folks? And again, just have a discussion about, hey, should there be some discussion around Lebanon perhaps funding a bit more of, of your budget, or funding some of your budget, because that's gonna be a draw? And then when Zionsville comes in, again, I'm not suggesting this chart's gonna change a lot, but it would be nice to see Zionsville come back in as an aside, but. President Mashala, do you have any thoughts on that, in terms of just that reflection of what's gonna be coming in terms of the push on them?
Yeah, that's certainly been discussed, and you've given us the previous attack. Show us your conversations.
Yeah, so I, I have had conversations with the municipalities about increasing their contract with the Boonie DC. I, I, it's a, it's a contract for services, right? It's not a donation.
Right.
So I, I want to be respectful of how I have that conversation with them as well. I think it's also important for you all to understand that, again, we have private investors who have invested in our five-year strategic plan. We went out in 2021 to launch that campaign, raised 740,000 over a five-year period, which was a pretty significant increase for the Boonie DC, the first time we've ever done that. The reason for that was because, well, it is incredibly important that we have the public sector at the table partnering with us at an appropriate level. We're also largely doing a lot of this work for, for those, for those companies that are here. The workforce development, that is all driven by them, and quite frankly, they need to have a stake in that as well. And so I think there's a variety of ways that we can look at this going forward, and certainly will commit to, to working with you all to determine what is that correct mix. I, I don't want our hands cut off in the process either, and so that's, it's just how do we, how do we balance that? Thank you. Any further questions, and Molly, we've talked about cut. And I hope that it would, if that indeed happens, that it would be more of a recalibration for you. So are there any further discussions on that front?
Molly, we're the second fastest county in the Chrome County in the state. Would you say third in the country?
63rd, yes.
And with that being said, what's, what's some of the reasons a big company would leave Boonie?
Historically, we've not seen a whole lot of big companies leaving. Where we do tend to see them leave, and these are questions that we ask them in the, kind of the intro process. Are you leasing? How long's your lease? There are a lot of companies, they go by three PLs, third-party logistics companies. So I am Company A, and I'm going, I don't want to do the transportation and logistics, the distribution for my product. So I'm going to give it to Company B. So Company B is that third-party logistics company. They will go wherever their contractor tells them to go. And so in those cases where we have seen companies leave, I would say a majority of the time, here in Lebanon, Conagra as an example, that was 10 years ago. The Conagra facility, that was a third-party logistics company. Conagra told them where else to go, so they leave town. The benefit you still have is that even if a company leaves, yes, you do lose the personal property taxes, but the buildings still exist, you're still collecting taxes on that particular building. But that is, I could probably count less than 10 companies that have left in the past 10 years. Other big example was like Pearson Education. They published in person, you know, they published textbooks. The industry changes, so we see some random examples like that here and there.
Thanks for your hard work. I know you guys have done a lot of work to ensure that business comes to Boone County, Indiana, and state.
Thank you. So.
You have a question?
Well, let's talk about the, let's talk about that amount.
What number is it?
It was 140.
I think it was 140.
It was 1, it was 140. We recommended we meant to take it down to 120, but it doesn't matter to me. It was, but I don't know, when everybody was coming, like, the people that they were looking for, like, was somebody supposed to leave like 4H, so I'm not looking at somebody else.
Tried. I never did get any response back for 4H. I talked to her on the phone, and she was gonna email me stuff, but I have not got that, I have not got my back.
Okay, so what point was just saying about 4H, let's put that on our list, revisit that in October.
Okay.
What's the?
Uh, let me, the total budget as it stands right now is 120.
No, the, the 1. All right. Um, I moved that.
Can we talk about what you're recommending here, or what you're thinking for this?
Oh, yes, the, uh, taking the amount to 120, I'm sorry, giving the IEDC $120,000 for. Boonie DC. Yes. Not the same. Not the same. To put some context around it, myself, Elise, was it Sheri?
I don't know. Tell me.
Who met with, who met with, who do we have an initial meeting with? Our pre, you gave us this.
I was there.
Ken, Ken. We went through this, so thank you again for coming. It's the fund, we boom EDC, $120,000 a year for their work. And then if you're visiting this, we explained, I think she heard at the beginning, our budget deficit, and trying to just work through, how do we continue, but also getting, because I think there, hopefully, is new funding potentially coming from Zionsville, I think, and then, it sounds like Councilwoman Ritchie is gonna nudge our friends in Lebanon to see some more.
I think, yeah, we need to have a group discussion, but yes, thank you.
But I think the efforts are duly noted, and I think a presentation like this should hope, hopefully help. Just out of curiosity, what was Zionsville funding you before there was nothing?
So that was about 40, two and a half, four years ago, $60,000.
60.
So even getting half of that or more would?
It would certainly help. Obviously, I'm, I'm going to, I'm gonna do my job here, I'm gonna argue against cutting here to do here, because at the end of the day, if Zionsville comes back on.
You have to work.
We have extra work.
Get done.
With the staff. And we're pretty darn good.
Yeah.
But we're running a lean operation, so that is something that I would have to consider.
Yeah.
May I counter? Talk about here. Could we drop down to 135?
130?
132.5. Hey, my job is to be your chief negotiator.
There you go.
If I didn't negotiate with you, you'd probably let me go.
That's good.
So 115. We negotiate!
In good faith.
In good faith.
And she brought Madeline today.
She did.
I think that's in and of itself worth a pop.
I do have, I do have a question.
Give back to the commissioners, if it's even considered.
No. Commissioner Wolf, fire, is ARP money usable for any of this? Laws and.
Well, this is sustainable funding, not one-time.
I know, I know, I'm just thinking as she. For.
They would have to show a loss of revenue.
Oh, okay.
So your last bid was 130, hers was 132.5.
My last bid was 115.
We don't go backwards. We didn't go all the way down.
Um, that's fine. So. 132.5. I'm good. 132.5.
Sounds good.
I move.
We're actually gonna get to take a lunch today.
I move that we, uh, fund the Boonie DC line for 137,400, $750,000 for the 2024.
8, 1,000.
132, 130.
500.
132,000, $500,000. I'm looking at this line, and I see a 750 for the 2024 budget.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Any further discussions? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those saying aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All righty.
Madeline.
Jennifer.
I'm gonna call you back.
Okay. We've got some time here, let's go ahead and delve into wages and salaries. For lunch. And then with lunch, we're going to just take a break to get a lunch, and then come back here to eat and keep.
Don't make any crazy decisions without.
Councilman Williams, 30 minutes. Okay. So, uh, thank you to. Councilwoman Ritchie, and Councilwoman Housesticker, and Councilwoman Manhorn. You all have been working within the last budget workshop and this one, I'll be prepared to the numbers. And yesterday specifically.
Can you talk a little louder, I think, sorry? You're good.
Thank you for the work that you've put into this, along with Auditor Crum, and your staff, and Megan Smith with HR. Really appreciate it. From what's been shared with me, a lot of progress has been made, and in fact, a great spreadsheet, Jennifer, that you put together, has been very useful, and there's a desire to delve into the findings even more, with more accuracy going forward, and that there's a request to have some more time to do that. And that's a legitimate request, because we don't pass the salary ordinance until December. So what is necessary today is to ask ourselves the question, what can we afford? And have that number secure. And then, kind of work into it backwards as far as how it would be distributed. So, with that said, any further comments here?
What we're trying to do is look at where all 2023 salaries fall. Look at how many people we have below the midpoint, what the cost would be to fund to the midpoint, while also aging our salary study another 2%, and then looking at what 5% and 2% would be. Part of looking at what it would take to get certain positions to midpoint is also figuring out what percentage increase that would be. So like, for example, there's a position that taking them to the midpoint would be a 10.37% increase, whereas there are others that would be below a 2% increase. I think kind of what we're thinking is that to stay in line with our wage study, we don't want to just do one thing across the board, because that's gonna just put us out of line again. And so we're trying to take a deep dive into like specific positions and figuring out what do we need to do to get these people in line with the wage study, and then doing a percentage for people who are above that point already. So we just need some more time to look at those people who are below the midpoint, and figure out what the appropriate percentage should be.
And I would just point to Debbie, because we haven't talked live today about this, but do you have thoughts above and beyond that? Because, you know, again, we just haven't spoken live, is there, is there something to add to that?
Probably not, I suppose.
Well, I mean, does it make sense, does that make, maybe you could just provide some perspective, because.
And I've said this kind of all along, I don't feel like we can sustain a midpoint moving forward. Midpoint is great, I would love to see everybody making what that wage study says they should be making at a midpoint. But can the county sustain that moving forward and still include increases in that? And I don't, I don't feel like we can.
And I guess my only retort to that is. And I, I guess my only, uh, retort to that is, until we see what that number is, which is what this spreadsheet's trying to do. Um, it's hard to know whether or not we can sustain that if we don't at least extend the computations to say, gosh, here's what the midpoint is for, and I said eighty, whatever. I mean, just pick a number of what we agree on, those who aren't at the midpoint, what's that going to cost? And then to age it for three, five, seven years, to your point, to say, oh, gosh, we're, we can't do that, or we can't do that this quickly, or, and again, part of, part of the thought is, to your point, if there's somebody with a fourteen percent pay increase to get to the midpoint, one would think that a fiscally responsible council might say, let's spread that over two, maybe three, and depending on our projections, four years, so that, one, they know that directionally they're going to get there, but they also understand the pain and anguish of not being able to do that, because that compounded would just be. So just, I mean, I think, I actually think we're on the same page, but we're not at a point yet where we can say that it's not sustainable, because we haven't been able to extend all those amounts yet, and you know things, Megan knows things about certain classes of employees that I don't think we had an ability to. So that's why we put it into a, you put it into a five hundred line item spreadsheet, does that, I mean, do you agree that?
There were some things on there as.
Okay.
With your questions last night that wouldn't really be in your computation or shouldn't be.
Okay.
Because they're kind of outside of that.
Okay.
There's that special exception.
Okay, and it sounds like we would have time between now and December to fine tune and have that discussion, say, yes, we agree, or we don't agree, get someone to weigh in and say, yep, but.
Well, yes and no, because we have to adopt that wage number.
Agreed.
By October.
Right.
You would have until December to make the salary ordinance the way you want it.
Got it.
But, yeah, but we would have to have that dollar amount confirmed for the October meeting.
So I'm, I don't, I'm not certain that we're that far apart from each other in terms of your, your determination. In your head, you know the numbers as well as anybody in this room, better than anybody in this room, so we may find that's accurate, but I don't think we've, we haven't been able to come to that final number to say, yep, it's sustainable, or absolutely not.
Right.
Yeah, and I think the other thing we're like watching for too is with the state. What is the word, with the salary study?
Alright, salary study.
So with the salary study. Aging, and I don't have to look at a spreadsheet anymore today, my eyes are going to go cross-eyed, uh, with the salary study aging.
Yes.
Making sure no one is falling below the minimum again. Um, so that's like on the radar too, because then that just puts us behind again, um, so.
So far, you, you guys have the spreadsheet, since the rest of us haven't seen that yet, and that's fine.
Yeah, I am not willing to share this yet.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure that, you know, not all of us have even seen what you, what you guys are looking at.
Correct, because there's still a lot of like, a lot of numbers on here that we're still trying to confirm and make sure that everyone's included, that needs to be included, and so I just, I would not want this circulated yet.
No, no, that's fine, I just, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted everybody else to understand that not all of us have even seen the spreadsheet. Not right now.
It's all yours.
Shred, shred that.
She's already shredding.
Alright, so the question at hand then, uh, is what can we afford, so I think this would be a good time to go back to Susan Harper Crum to get that overview, and then make decisions, uh, based on that, we, we can't go over, obviously, what's been advertised, but we can bring it in. Um, and then it would be good to hear from, I mean, Sheri and Jennifer, would you agree, Kevin, if they give enough of a, would you, okay, so, could you hear from you as far as, you know, your thoughts on going forward, what would be a good expectation of what we would potentially address in October, November?
Who's going to grab?
Okay, so, so we're going to go through the drill first of budget thirty thousand feet. Where's our deficit? What are we going to plug the deficit with, and what, what do we have, then, then we can come back to salaries, okay.
I guess I also have a question, and maybe some of the other department heads will also have the same question. I feel like if you're mandating us to get to the midpoint, then you're telling us how to pay our employees.
Oh, no, 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 we're talking about just funding, looking at funding, that would still be, but it gives you more of a range between the minimum and the midpoint.
So if you have some departments that don't feel like an employee should be at the midpoint, this is kind of all forgotten.
Well, I, I disagree, I think we just hand over to them the responsibility and the discretion to say, I know what this person does fifty-two weeks a year, and I'm going to go a little bit above midpoint, because they've funded me in a way that allows me the cushion to do that here, and then maybe cut somebody less than what's recommended, because that's up to you guys, I mean, but, but if you don't have enough money to make that discretionary call, then.
But does that just go against your whole grain of what you're trying to do, that everybody's got to get to the midpoint? If you, if you say that, you can't do what you just said.
No, I mean, didn't, I, didn't the salary study have recommendations in it, in a, in a methodology that said, one, here's, here's a chart, and here's a document by which to live by in terms of what compensation strategy ought to be? And I thought, when I wasn't part of the council, but you guys took that in and said, we're going to march forward with this, versus spending the money on a salary study, and then letting it gather dust, I'm, and again, I.
No, that's good.
Okay, so, so I think, I think that's the premise for.
No, no, yeah.
Talking about midpoint.
No, I think it's good, it's good discussion, I just.
You don't necessarily.
No, I just don't know how we're going to get there with, not of us, all of us seeing the spreadsheet and doing all of it before.
Oh, you're going to.
We're going to have to just, uh.
You're going to see the spreadsheet when it's done.
No, no, I understand that, but this, this discussion we're having now, we need to do it at a very high level and move on.
Yeah.
Because.
That's right.
Because I, why spend a bunch of time here when we're going to see the spreadsheet, we're going to have a whole bunch of other questions once we actually see the spreadsheet.
You're going to have even more questions.
We're, we're actually wasting our time right now.
So, so right now, we're going to transition into that thirty thousand foot view of where we are with the budget across the board, and then back into the question of what can we afford, uh, related to salaries.
Can I, I just do it, yeah, I've heard about this, it's my first time seeing this, what?
I spent a lot of time with that book.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, I, I guess they don't give it out digitally, but we often talk about, and I think it's been used in multiple discussions, and it's been used as a fact point by multiple, um, elected officials and department heads, X county pays their employees this, X county pays their employees that. How is this fact book taken into consideration?
She can tell you.
She sprayed duck on you. Man, and, and the reason I ask is, I'm sure they're, I'm just going to be looking at, if there's a correlation difference in what this is probably saying what we should pay, than what the salary and wage that you paid. Then I guess I go back to Auditor Crum's point, which I never thought of, are we putting ourselves in a slippery slope dictating to a department head or an elected official, what they should be paying their employees, so.
So this, the fact book, it's, we don't know how the, the counties have come up with what they're paying people, and that's a big component to this. I think we're, it's kind of comparing apples to oranges, if you look at our wage study, and then you like look at what we're paying compared to other counties. So in our salary study, it was based on comparisons to Hamilton County, Hendricks County, Tebke New County, Shelby County, Montgomery County, Clinton County, and then several towns, I don't have that list in front of me right now. This book is just based on counties, not what like Zions, I know Zionsville and Lebanon were part of our study too, so not what Zionsville and Lebanon are paying. And my understanding is part, the team, whoever was part of that study way back when, they specifically selected those like counties and cities that were going to be used as a comparison. I, if you want to know why those specific ones were selected, I'd have to get, I don't know that part, because I wasn't part of it then. But I think part of the reason those cities and towns and counties were selected, um, because they're kind of considered our, for lack of a better word, like competition. Like, we may lose a county employee, like an officer, to Lebanon or Zionsville, or we may lose someone in one of our departments to another department in Hamilton County. But if you, this book compares counties by population, so for example, if you look, Boone County is the only county in our population group that was using our wage study, so like the ones that we use, like Hamilton, Hendricks, Tebke New, they're in a different population section. Shelby, different population section, Montgomery, Clinton, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, but wouldn't that make sense, because based on the population, it's going to be a correlation to how much taxes you collect and things of that nature? Like, how they, just looking at one of the appendixes, like, a, a population of seventy thousand is only going to collect so much income.
Right.
And property tax, because of that.
What I was saying is, don't compare us, like what we're paying people to the other people in our population group, because like, for example, so Bartholomew County is in our population group. What is the likelihood that someone from Boone County is going to drive all the way to Bartholomew County just because a job pays a little bit more? So I think the wage study, they were looking at who are our true competitors, like, we could lose someone to Hamilton County, it's right there, we could lose someone to Lebanon, we could lose someone to Whitestown. And so looking at who our true competitors in the market are, that was like one factor, and then the study gets even more in-depth with how that these different counties and cities and towns were weighted. So I think a big thing too is, we don't know how these other, like Bartholomew County, I know they had a wage study, I don't know how, how that was done, what was taken into consideration, so there's a lot of factors there.
And then something else you might consider is, for instance, the sheriff's office, if you're saying he has twelve people under the midpoint, he may not be able to fund that midpoint, so you're funding the midpoint everywhere but Lit. Life isn't fair, but is that fair? You're saying, okay, we need to get everybody else, but you can't fund your Lit, so we can't get you to the midpoint, so what do we do there? I mean, because you could have, MBH is going to be your same problem.
He, I think he was.
I mean, it, it's, you've got.
No.
You're welcome, you're welcome, Nick.
You did, I, 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 I agree with that, and I.
Join the club, Nick.
And you, and you made valid points, because as I'm, as I'm looking at this, I would say that I compare apples to apples. I get that nobody's going to probably drive from Boone to Bartholomew County, but I look at it as a direct comparison of, they're still municipal county entities. Like, hey, here's more or less what an assessor is going to be making.
Yeah.
A auditor, like, it's still.
Right.
Like, I think about it in the private sector, like, alright, I work for a tech company, I'm not going to drive to a corporate office, maybe in Evansville, but still, in, in the private sector, things are different. As I look at this, I don't know how long this book's been coming out, but I would probably venture to.
Forever.
Forever, I would probably venture to say, most counties or entities don't do a wage study, they probably use this as the gospel to say, hey, how am I making sure that I'm paying people? Or if they've done a wage study, enough people have probably done it, that they've said, alright, enough people in the book have done it to get me to this level, and it starts balancing its, itself out. I just, I get nervous, because even when I look at the wage study, I'll, I'll use it as an example, and let me be emphatically clear, I'm not asking for me, y'all can, I'm not asking for this council to get a raise. But I look at it, I just found it very interesting that the council and other departments, the raises, there were nothing, when you even looked at this, it was, it was like null and void. And there were other entities or departments that had huge raises, and I was just kind of like, wow, like, there were just gaps and disparities in the wage study that I just found to be kind of interesting, and I'm like, alright, what do you even fact check the wage study itself? Like, it was kind of our one source, so to your point, like, to some degree, everything is an apples to apples, but is there another, is there another wage study that was, you know, I put it wrong, I said earlier in the day, is there another wage study that other instances have done that compares the ones done as well? So, I don't know if that, I'm, I'm not asking like if there's another wage study like in Hamilton.
Good resource for us, as a secondary.
Yeah, yes.
And we're falling, sorry, I didn't mean it, we're, we're falling in, in line, we're none of, like, Debbie, I'm, I keep using you, because we looked at yours, like, we're, we're not off, we're not like the highest one in our population, we're not the lowest one, so I feel like we're in the middle still, which is in line with what we're trying to do, we're not the highest paid.
I'm sorry, you raised your voice, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You have to come on to that, yeah, Mike.
How long did you say?
Four hundred.
Okay.
Thank you, that would be it, yes, I. Um, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to look at everything that you have to look at, and we understand that. When it comes to salaries, it's just every year, it's, you know, it's just a challenge, and we know that, because we've got great employees, and nobody that I'm aware of at this point in time is here because they don't have anything else to do. They want to do a good job for the community, they also want to make sure that they have good income coming home for their families. So Debbie, you've got a very good point regarding people, different people in all of our offices have a different, some, most of them have a different level of responsibility. It's not going to be you like or dislike the person, um, if their responsibility level is not the same, then their pay should not be the same, their mid-level should not be the same. So it may be a matter of, let's give a new, uh, title to a position, so that you can justify the mid-level being less than what, you know, the salary study's great for a guideline, but you guys, we get to, you get the responsibility, you get the opportunity to pay people according to what you think is happening in our county. I think we've got great things going on in our county, so the wage study is a great guideline, but if you decide to go above it a little bit, not below it, but above it a little bit, then that's okay too. You know, another thing to look at is that, like, my office, I believe everybody is midway, and maybe even, so that's not going to be an option for me. So I'm going to be looking at strictly, um, you know, the, the increase, the percentage increase. Debbie may have one person that needs to go up midway, the other person is already there, but if you give somebody midway, and it's a larger percentage than, let's say, oh, five percent, which might be great across the board, um, but, um, if you do that, the, I don't think that that position, this is just me, they would get an additional five percent. If you get a ten percent pay increase, hey, we'll take it.
Yeah.
Um, so what I'm saying is, so that's something to look at, you might want to think about, if you're going to continue this and bring it up again in another month, let each of us kind of give you a general idea of what we think that ours would be, let's pretend like we're going to don't, let's pretend like five percent. So my office would be telling you, for the reporter's office, five percent increase, this is that amount. Another office may say, I've got one person that needs to go up midway, but everybody else is good, this person is, I'm going to redefine them, and so they're midway for what I believe their job responsibility level is. And so I think that partnering with us, um, is a good idea, we used to have that committee, and I think we need to look at that again, because, not because we're trying to, you know, be in charge of anything, but it's a team effort, it really is, and we wanted to let you know what we do and how we get it done, we want to make sure we're supporting you guys, because we know the pressure that's on you. But certainly, like, in this situation, we'd be happy to go back and say, okay, this is what I would like to see, we're midway, so we're only going to be looking at them across the board, whatever pay raise it is, you know, and, and, um, I'm grateful that you guys never pull out the, um, elected official or the appointed official, because my first deputy, our first deputy's pay is based on ours, so they're going to, you know, be treated the same way. But please think about that, we've got time for us to get, you can kind of let us know what you think the midway should be on that, give us another reporter, Deb, whatever works. But if there is somebody that's not at, let's, if, let's say it's, we say clerical there, then Debbie might be able to say, I'm going to make that person a clerical too, so that halfway mark they're already at, or that's going to, or they're not going to get a pay raise, that, I appreciate that, give us that funding to make that decision for our employees, but if we need to redefine some things that's not on the wage study, you know, we'd be happy to look at that and do that to help you out, so.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I was going to say, something that we have discussed is with some of these people that we do not think are at midway, like, there are a few departments that we were going to be reaching out to to have some more discussions with them, that's part of like the deep dive that we want to do. And we're not trying to mandate you have to pay, we're just making sure you have the range that you need to determine what you want to pay.
And then if we get back with you on that, when you're looking at the total numbers, you're going to say, you know what, we thought this might be more expensive, but they're not going to, to do that for that employee, so that amount that we thought for the auditor is not going to be as, as much as we originally estimated.
Right, and I, oh, sorry, I will just say too, like, part of the reason we've wanted to look at this is if we just say five. Right. And I, oh, sorry, I will just say too, like, part of the reason we've wanted to look at this is if we just say five percent across the board, with this salary study aging, that could, we were borderline having some people who were gonna go below the minimum still. And I, we worked really hard last year to get everyone at least funded to the minimum. Or if we did five percent, that put some people over midpoint, and some people it kept them below midpoint. So that's when we decided, like, we need to look at each individual position and, and chart this out, but-
If this wage study is aging, when do you put a stop to that?
Yes, sir.
And let's don't go do another wage study. So do you see what I'm saying? It's like, that, again, you can just use it as a guideline. Three years ago, this is what it was. But, you know, right now, if we, if it's a little, if the five percent would be a little bit above, it's still, you're still treating people, I think, fairly and equally. And then the department head or elected official will make sure that, that range is within the parameters of their job responsibility.
Right. And that's, we're just trying to keep the range current. We're trying to keep the range current.
That, again, the guy, as great as the guideline, but I don't know that you guys have to stick to it exactly. Because at this point, it's already probably, considering some of the other pay in other counties, it's probably outdated. And it will always be outdated a year after you get it properly, so.
That, you know, Debbie's made some really, really good points, uh, for us to think about. But what number do we need to get to so that then we can have this discussion at a later date?
Six hundred thousand?
Only a six hundred thousand.
So, so we just need to basically, at this time, budget for that six hundred thousand and come back and actually make a final decision?
And I would say with the different options we're looking at, we are well within that, including new positions?
I don't know about the new positions because we haven't-
The six hundred thousand.
They're not, oh.
New positions are inseparably.
And then I would even be more emphatic that the six hundred-
We're well within that then.
Is doable.
Yeah.
More than doable.
Yeah.
Then what happens to those offices that are at the max? What are you gonna do with those?
Are they in the six hundred, you're saying? Or you're, I mean-
I don't, I don't think there's gonna be any cuts that's gonna be made. I don't know, I, I don't know what you guys are, we'll see that, but I, yeah, there's not gonna be cuts made as far as I can-
Does that answer your question?
What do you mean? Like, we're not gonna say you don't get it because you're gonna go, yeah, no, 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 no.
Yeah, so.
It sounds like we, we sounded much more rigid than what we intended to. And that's, that's not what we intended to do. But I appreciate you coming up here and offering up the partnering and the ability to take the time and say, gosh, guys, it's not sixty for my department, it's, it's fifty-three, and we've got seven to play. You know, I mean, I, I appreciate that, but I-
Well, I know that that goes across the board, you're applying a little bit more.
But, we're not near as rigid as she was, I mean-
Some of these offices, whether they want, to say it out loud, have money in their payroll lines that may not be used. So we can also look at what their true payroll is to the end of the year and see what they're gonna have, and that could be part of what's budgeted for next year. So that we're not maybe-
We should do that anyway. I mean, why wouldn't we do that anyway?
We should, but-
No, I'm, I'm not saying you have all the time in the world, I'm just saying, maybe we should-
No, I'm saying some offices don't like that.
Yeah, it's, it's, mindset is too big and everything, but let me just say this too. We always know that's gonna roll back into, you know, the general budget. If you, if I'm correct, remind you, tell me if this is different now. It used to be, do an ordinance or resolution at like, the beginning of December or whatever, and, and say, like, if I know for sure that my office out of the general budget is not gonna spend two thousand dollars or five thousand dollars. If we put that, am I correct, in an ordinance or a resolution, and that goes in with the budget, then that offsets-
I mean, it has, at this point, it has to be done before now. You can't do it in December.
Oh, okay, you used to be, as long as you did it by the, before the end of the year.
Now generally, they need to know when the budget gets adopted, and then everything is submitted.
So six hundred thousand, we're-
If I'm not heard to ask that, if you know, like, if you originally, if I was gonna buy a book of, a box of encyclopedias for five thousand dollars and I know I'm not, and that's in the general budget, literally, we can do an ordinance to say, that's gonna be removed, and that goes to the balance.
Yeah.
Rather than just rolling back in and out. Am I correct on that? Yeah, okay, that's a, that's a thought. I'm not gonna do that, because I don't have any encyclopedias.
I mean, I, I, I see we have a good number of elected officials, department heads here. At your, at your preference, sorry, have you all, sorry. I asked it in the last council meeting, so I'd be curious again, um, if you were given a lump sum that helped you more to kind of, you know your employees better than anyone, because you, you literally hire them and work with them on a day-to-day basis. Like, hey, here's the lump sum of money we've given, I don't know how we give out the five percent. I don't think there was a conversation about putting some discretion behind it. Two percent has to be mandated or whatever. Does that help you all more in your, just give me a second please. Does that, does that help you all more in making a decision, or us mandating, oh, here's the midpoint, you got it?
They're not mandating.
What kind of guidance? Go ahead, ask.
If you'd like to speak just kind of-
I, I can speak to that.
Can I go? Are you, go ahead, let's go ahead.
Well, I can speak to your question if you give us a lump sum. So in the, traditionally in the past, councils, let's say it's a two percent raise, which has been the traditional raise we've gotten over the years. Council has said, one and a half, either one and a half to two percent is cost of living, and the other one and a half to one percent, they give you a lump sum. We take that, I've taken that lump sum, and we're able to get people up over multiple years. So, if someone's below what they should be, you know, I might give everyone in my office two point seven five percent raises, but then give some, some people a point two five percent extra that I didn't give to the other person. But that takes time to get them up, right? You're not getting them overnight, or even two years. Usually that's like a four or five year, like three or three to five years where we can get that person up toward one percent, if you give us that lump sum.
But you have a plan to do that.
Yes, you have a plan to do that.
Right.
So, that's what we've traditionally done. The other thing we've traditionally done in the prosecutor's office is, if we were to hire somebody, and that person was a newer person to that role, say I hire someone straight out of college, and that person's in place and someone's already at the midpoint. I don't pay that person-
Of course.
At the midpoint. I pay them closer to the mid, then I take that extra money in the following, in the following, um, pay cycle, in the following budget year. And I might get that person up a little bit, you know, slowly get the lump budget, the extra money that I already had in that budget.
Then you have that for-
And I have that to get them up. But again, it takes time, and it takes turnover, which you don't want.
But it happens.
It happens. But the thing I should remember is, most of these offices are really small. You know, I am lucky in that our office is thirty-two people. So when I have that turnover, and if I'm lucky enough to, I can hire someone at a lower rate, I can do that. But it's becoming increasingly harder to do. But it is something we can't do. But I prefer, when you give us, if you give us raises, I prefer fifty percent cost of living, fifty percent-
Discretionary.
Discretionary slash, uh, performance, we call it performance-based or performance, whatever you call that.
And there's nothing that prevents you as a department head from giving a performance review twice a year? If you, if you, if you now-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it don't want something that prevents us, it's just hard, but yeah.
It's on you.
Well, I mean, I, no, I agree, but, yeah, I mean, I, I agree it's on me.
Well, I say on, not only you, I'm saying it's on everyone. Performance reviews twice a year have just proven, you know, statistics show, it just improves performance, it gives you motivation, plus if you have turnover, you're kind of like, hey, I held on to it, I got an incentive. It's a care for any, for me, for anyone. It's a, hey, I wanna do something. And you know, going into the budget cycle for us, like, I had these performance reviews coming up, and you know what you're gonna do with them or not.
I think a lot of us would love to do more performance reviews, uh, since it's the man hours, and for some people, for some offices, I know it's the training. And for us, it's just a matter of getting it done, given our lack of, we're not really that top heavy, because most administration, like in our office. You go to Pierce Department, you're the guy.
Like, like, I guess you bring, if you're like, what are you trying this up for?
I mean, I've got three people, that's it. Myself, my chief, my, traditionally, like, the departments, they've got, you know, they've got three or four people, you know, four people up there to help with administration type stuff. There are more people. So that's, that's my one point.
Gotcha, I appreciate it.
But, and thanks, I'm sorry, I just wanna make one last comment. Um, you guys were talking earlier, um, a little bit before Debbie came up about, looking at the salary studying, like, you shouldn't consider Bartholomew County, we're not gonna lose people to Bartholomew County.
I just used that as one example.
So, what I would say is, that is traditionally true for most offices. That is not true for certain offices. Uh, particularly the Sheriff's Department and the Upan Prosecutor's Office. We compete with virtually everybody. We will lose people to Bartholomew County. We will lose people to, to counties that are not doing this. And, and at the same time, we will attract, people will move here from other places to take jobs. They won't move county over, they'll move from the, from southern Indiana to take a job here. They'll move from, so, it's a good thing as a whole for the whole county, you have to say that. But I just wanna be careful that certain offices, due to the nature of the pool, what they're, they're pulling from, we have to have those counties which we truly are competing with. And, and it's just like, I know that he's just not competing with, you know, the localities here, he's competing with other sheriff's departments.
I will say this, my greatest is in this county.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you mean.
Of course.
Yes, it is.
Right.
Prosecutor's offices, one, there's multiple.
Yeah.
One for the age season in the county. My, our deeps competition is the one to get. Oh, yeah, but you're awesome, you're, but at the same time, other counties too.
Well, let me just explain. The reason I, I use Bartholomew County as an example is, if our population group is this box. I, there is no, Boon, Boone County is the one that I highlighted. There's no other county in our population highlighted from the wage study. I was just using that. I don't know every reason, thought that went into the counties and towns that were selected in the wage study. That was just like one piece of it.
And, and I think, I, I, I think they also, some of the offices, like my office, they were supposed to, and I think they did, I don't wanna make it clear, they were supposed to, um, like, take us and compare us with like state offices as well, like, like DCS, uh, Public Defender's Office and so-
Yeah. That, that, that was. And that's what I was saying, that is, this is just one factor. Then there was this whole, like, two hundred, three hundred page sum thing of how then it was weighted. And, like, when it was explained to me, it made sense, but my brain is not gonna regurgitate that or make sense to everyone in this room. Okay.
Thank you for your time. I apologize for people who are not supposed to watch.
Nope, you're fine. Anyone else elected, no prayer, oh, come on. No, no, you are.
I'd just like to add that, our, like, working for the county, working, like, all of our numbers are on Gateway.
That's what I was saying, public work.
You can go work at, you know, Lily and be like, I wanna know what the girl next to me makes.
Yeah.
You don't get that option. So, it's not like we can be like, okay, these two people do the exact same thing, but I like you more. Because there's gonna be one person from every office that wants their gateway.
Yep.
And they're gonna be like, um, she makes thirteen cents more than me.
Yep.
You have to, I have zero issues owning it, and she makes thirteen cents more than you because she answered the phone to contact you. I have, you know, and I think we kind of get into this issue where we keep people because they've been with us so long, and they, we don't mandate they do more.
Yep.
And so we do have, my office has had lots of overturn. I won't pay anybody else's. But, I mean, we have some people that did very, very, very minimal to downstairs, not waiting on anyone, getting paid the exact same thing. We, we were, you know, responsible for money and tons of other things. So I draw all those people up to where they are, but there's still a little bit of difference, you know? If this person's waiting on the counter, taking way more money, but this person's back here doing something with elections. I mean, they're still different. But, I mean, I do feel like, you give us this branch of how we wanna weigh it. We're still gonna be responsible to our workers because they're gonna log into Gateway, and they're gonna see, you gave me seven percent, you gave me ten half.
Yeah.
I mean-
They're gonna know.
But to me, that's fine.
We just wanna give you the, the range to be able to pay what you think it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I agree, I, you got the Gateway watchers, and I, and I get it, my, I, I just go back to it. I would rather, I would rather give the onus and the responsibility, here's a, here's a, here's a chunk of money, and the elected official, the department head, have that discretion. And I, and I can say this, because I've been a public employee, like, I worked in county government, I've worked in municipal government, I, I know how it is. I raised my hand, I signed up. I think Debbie has said it best. A majority of people who do it, they enjoy the work that they do at the end of the day. Like, they do enjoy it. You can go out, and people will do it. You can go out and make more money in the public sector. There's no doubt about that. What I do get cautious about is, we are playing what I think is a dangerous cat and mouse game of, and I think my record speaks for itself, of making sure our employees are paid in a very equitable manner. I just get nervous of like, alright, we're, we're playing this cat and mouse game of trying to pay people, and we're gonna get to a point where I'm like, alright, this is just not sustainable. Where you'll get to a level where, for two or three years, there's no pay raises. Like, we need to just, we need to just hold, we need to hold things, our expenses are at this level, our income, our revenue's not coming in. Or it'll be one percent a year, one percent a year. And then people will really start looking at, well, why is this person making this much money? Then you'll really be in a, oh, well, this person's making X amount of dollars, and it'll just be, it'll be challenging.
Alright, so let's take a moment here.
Did you guys have?
Megan, did you wanna speak? You came up.
I, I will probably hate it, but that's okay. So my thought process is, I like the five percent, or, or whatever the percent is across the board. But the discretionary part of it, in my opinion, I feel like that's where we get skewed on the wage study and that kind of stuff. Because if I feel only one person's doing one percent worth of work, and I give that to someone else, then we're increasing their pay based off their current performance. If I, you know, my one person who was only doing one percent decides, hey, this job isn't for me, and they leave, then I hire somebody in and they're doing a better job, I don't have any money left to give them that increase. So in my opinion, if you're given a discretionary of the two percent or whatever it is, I don't feel like it should be able to be given to a different person because you feel they're doing a better job. Because that only skews the midpoint.
Right.
Which is where we're kind of in a struggle right now.
Just as an example, if we were to say five percent, two percent mandatory, three percent discretionary, the two percent would be to account for the age increase in the wage study to keep us in bounds. I'm not saying that those are set guidelines, but like, in a range. And then the three percent would be discretionary. Is, is that what you're saying? You would-
Right, but if I, so Employee A and Employee B, if I don't think Employee A is doing three percent, you know, worth getting a three percent raise, and I only give them two, I don't feel like it's right to give Employee B four percent.
Okay.
Because I feel like that's where it skews your midpoint, that you're trying to get everybody to a certain point. Not to mention that if Employee A decides to leave at some point, and they, you know, I hire somebody else, and they're doing a much better job, then that percent's gone.
I think that, the, the-
Am I gonna come back to you and ask for more?
You would have to, she would have to give it to you.
Right, the two percent that's mandatory, that's keeping people in line.
Yes.
So like, if you gave Employee B two percent and not the three percent, and then that person left and you hired someone else, they're still gonna be in the, in the window, the range that they should be in.
Right, but over time, that's where we've gotten where we're at right now, is because, you know, say, and, and I understand with some of the bigger offices that they've gotta, they have to do something like that. But I feel like that is kind of creating the problem we're at, is that, you know, someone may only get the mandatory, and someone else gets six percent. You know, so.
I was about to say, you don't have to give that other person the other percent.
Oh, I know, I know that. I mean, I would, if I was gonna do something like that, I personally, in my office, would keep it.
Yeah.
Maybe in later days, they're doing better, and they're gonna get better.
That's what I was gonna say.
What I'm talking about is overall, as long as it shouldn't allow.
Actually is happening. I think what Jennifer, what Jennifer's saying is, is a lot of what is happening, and what we've actually seen, I, I know Debbie has seen it, uh, so, that has, that has happened in the past, so.
So they're giving the three to someone else, and they're giving like eight?
I do what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Four people in your office, one of them gets two, three of them get eight.
Yes.
I mean, I think you do have it.
But if you did have it, you said, I could even say like seven percent, I mean, I don't know that any of them would-
So camping it at the max?
Yeah, I, I, because I don't, I also, when we looked, I don't think five percent was really putting anyone over the max, right?
No.
Yeah.
They did put most of them over the mid.
Right, but it didn't-
There might have been a couple that were like two hundred below the mid.
But that didn't include the age increase, so I don't, I don't think-
Right, so that would pretty much see everybody over the mid.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think it puts anyone over max.
No.
Say, what was your, what was your question again?
I don't remember.
We break for lunch, we start in like twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Why, why don't we get your comment here right now, and then we'll-
Yeah.
I just wanted to offer, if anybody needs some history on it, just because we had a committee, right? And then it was broken down to just me, Don Lamb, Jeff. I can give you that history, I can tell you why we chose, what went into all of this. I can give you that history, I can tell you why we chose, what went into all of this, what numbers go where. Jennifer and I had a very long conversation about how it all works. And then, I think, speaking on Jennifer's point, what she's saying is, if you have six people in all these different salary ordinance lines, and this person gets six percent in their line because they do a better job, suddenly, we're having one line continuously falling short. And, and it's underfunded because whoever's in the line isn't getting those raises, right?
Right.
And then, when we, when they come, when we look at midpoint, we're going, oh, this line's severely underfunded, why is that? And it's because the person in that line didn't get those raises, it was given to other people.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's the wrong way to do it, but I'm saying it does mess with your numbers as far as, like, where the funding is when we're looking at the salary ordinance and going, well, this one's under, this one's over. You know, those, those are the reasons why, because of that percentage, more of a percentage was given to someone.
But if we've got people that are looking for us and we're not giving them above the minimum, like the two point, like the cost of living, can you do that two or three, you're consistent?
Then.
Then why are we not letting those people go? If you're not, and those are the questions.
But that's not our job to determine.
I think you're saying in a general, you're saying in general, and you use yourself as an example. Hey, if you're not performing, then what are you still doing here? And almost to your point, if someone isn't performing, you bring someone in, goes to Ken's point. You should, Ken's point, you should bring someone up to the level that they should be at. And then, once they're performing, you wouldn't have that problem of getting down. So I, I, I do have a question. What, what are we, what are we deciding when we get back from lunch?
Okay, so what we need to do is look at that big overview. Where are we now?
On the budget.
On the budget. And what can we afford?
Okay.
Got it.
Now, we can either charge through and stay in place, or we can break for, you know, ten minutes, go grab our food and come back here and work it through. For you all.
Yeah, 'cause I feel like that conversation's.
You brought your lunch, and you wanna eat in here with us, or.
I don't do it.
Um.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I feel like we need a break.
We do need a break, I agree, a hundred percent. I think, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
I can't, it's not forming words anymore.
Yeah, we're gonna come back, and we're gonna get a high level where the budget stands, based on the decisions we made today. So this is the deficit, blah, 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 here's a red. And then we're going to make a decision on where the salaries and wages need to be, or what we can afford.
Or, or just go to get a.
Well, let, let me just give you a little bit of insight.
Then you got a break.
Thank you.
Because if you don't decide until October, what you guys wanna do, it's a hell of a lot of work on our part.
Got it.
To get it done in less than forty-five days.
Got it.
Okay.
It's a lot of meetings with departments, it's a lot of working through formulas, it's a lot of deciding who wants this person to have this month. It's a lot of work. Um, it takes us about a month and a half to even get to that point.
Okay.
We have to have salaries done by the second week of December. If we can make any decision today, it would be my ultimate goal.
So, and just as a hypothetical.
Because as I've asked previous in many budget sessions, this should have been done at the very beginning.
You're right.
And then everything else follows, so.
So hypothetically, we can say, hey, we're gonna be to the midpoint, or we're gonna give people a five percent raise. We just need to make a decision on what we're gonna do.
So that we can at least start the process of getting our forms together.
Okay.
The department heads are working on this. I mean, we, we can't just give Nick.
I get it.
Two weeks.
Right.
To sit down and think, where do I want all my people to fall in?
I get it, okay.
I mean, with us, if the pension are.
I get it, I just wanna make sure, so we need to make a decision.
It's a lot of.
I get it.
Work outside of the decision.
To, to really help the auditor's office, we need to make a decision.
No, I get it, I just wanted to make sure, some sort of.
So that we know how to move forward.
Right.
So I would like to offer this. The work that's happening here, Sherry, that you and Jennifer are doing, if you dive into it, you're gonna be enlightening us. From what I hear, you would like more time. So the gift of that time would be between now and October. Come back and make some more.
But, but the problem with that gift of that time, it's gonna be crunched to the auditor's office.
What I'm asking is, if we do this in October, that gives us then October, December, to do the work that you're speaking of. Well, that's the thought. So come October, I'm just gonna break it down for you. There's two and a half in my office, in October, there's two and a half weeks, got a week of fall break. I probably have multiple people out. November, we literally have two full weeks in November of work with the holidays.
Yep.
December, I've got a week.
And we got other jobs in the office.
So I can give.
That gives us four and a half weeks to meet with every department.
Option, it's, it.
Now, we could put two salary ordinances together.
I was gonna say, I can give it.
We could do a midpoint, and we can do a percentage.
I was gonna say, I can, one.
That'd be complicated, wouldn't it, for, for.
One option, which I don't think is what Sherry and I at least favor, is to get it done today, we can save five percent across the board, two percent mandatory, three percent discretionary.[1691.91]